As you all know, this is a special call council meeting that's being hosted today. And it's not necessarily a meeting, it's a discussion meeting. This opportunity, this gives us all the opportunity to first discuss the items in advance of us actually having to take action on it. To my knowledge, at this time, there are going to be no actionable items with the exception of one that just happened, that just came up at about 4:00 PM this evening, and which will be discussed in executive session. So before we get started with our discussion, I am asking council, I need a motion to amend the agenda after receiving information from our financial advisor that I really need to discuss with members of council regarding a personnel matter affecting Williamsburg County Personnel Budget.
Motion to amend the agenda to include what you just said supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of amending the budget or amending the agenda to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, a recent personnel matter affecting the personnel budget of county government, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers have the same. The motion is carried. Thank you. Now, we're going to go ahead and get started with this. First, I need to know if we have a sound check for Facebook. Facebook sound check. Can it hear us clearly? And why are you in there JC? Also check to see if the phone lines, if they can hear us good on the phone line. As you all know, just being advised that the county facilities are closed in an effort to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 for upcoming council meetings will be held in the chambers as closed to the public and limited members of county government staff and media will be allowed to attend. If you are signing on by telephone, that telephone number is 1-877. My teleconference line is 1-877-039-2073. That access number is 590-380-589. Or you can connect with us on the Williamsburg County Government Facebook page or the website, which is www.wiimsburgcounty.gov. So you do not have to have a Facebook account to connect with us and listen to our discussion items. Again, today's meeting is designed to discuss issues with county council prior to actions being taken. This is the time in which I am standing here just presenting you information about up and coming things that we will be looking for some action to be taken on. Since I am approximately six feet away from everybody, I'm going to remove my face cover to allow our citizens and my members of council to hear me more clearly. Is that okay with everybody? Alright, we're going to go ahead and get started. As you can see, the first order of, first of all, let's have our invocation. Who would like to do our invocation for us?
Let us bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, we thank you this evening. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the most humble manner that we know how, with bowed heads and humbled hearts. We come, heavenly Father, first of all, to thank you for all the blessing you bestowed upon us individually and the county of Williamsburg. We want to ask heavenly Father that you continue to bless us, continue to guide us, continue to help us make decisions that will be in the best interest of this county and you will look upon it and smile. Heavenly Father, we want to again thank you for everything that you've done for us. And we want to ask that you help us to conduct this meeting in an honorable fashion and help the things that we say. Even the thoughts that we think heavenly Father be pleasing in your side. And at the conclusion of this meeting that you provide each of us safe return to our residence. These and many other blessings we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Our first order of discussion is the Williamsburg County Financial and Operational Reconstruction Plan. Over the last few months, we obviously have had our challenges with our finances and county government. So over the last month, few weeks, we have been trying to figure out ways in which we can somewhat somehow save the county money. Since it was realized that most of the county's general fund is obligated to personnel and the spending of that line item, I felt it was necessary that we start there. And that is exactly what we've done. Phase one of the reconstruction plan deals with that. Last year, the county was looking for a company that would come in and kind of do a countywide assessment to determine our ratio of employees and services. However, we sent out bids for that company, for our companies, and we got zero back. So unfortunately, it fell upon my lap to do something to help us with this process in which I think that I do have the professional background to be able to do this. So, and speaking with our financial advisor, he and I have worked really hard on trying to, number one, confirm numbers. And then we're talking about financial numbers. So he was in on it and he will be on during the executive session conference call for you all to ask him any information that you want to ask about my numbers or any other numbers or information that's being presented to you today. The first item is what's the purpose of this? We need to clarify, have to clarify the number of county employees that we actually have. We have, and could not only just determine our numbers, but also compare the services with the employees of similar counties within our population zone. And also to introduce our plan to improve our financial stability and for us to save money in the county. Phase one, like I said, county employees. These are the counties that are within our population group. We got Chester, Chester, Chesterfield, Collinon, Dillon, Dillon, Edgefield, Jasper, Marion, Newburgh Union, and of course, Williamsburg County. I'm going to get someone to hand these out for you all. I have a spreadsheet that lists all of their demographics for you to take with you and review. Just taking a look at it from the perspective of employees and how many everyone has. Edgefield, as you can tell up there, they have 138 full-time employees and 16 part-time employees. Marion, 206 with 12 part-time. Claritin County, 302 and 39. Where it looks, the way it looks up there, it suggested that obviously we do have counties that are, that have more people than us. But during my research, I found that we have to do a better job in Williamsburg County at cleaning up our data because it was once reported that Williamsburg County had well over 360 full-time employees and then another 40 to 50 part-time employees. Now, that information had been reported to SCAC, which was inaccurate information. And that has been that way for some years now. So it gave the illusion that Williamsburg County had way too many employees. So that was step one, is to clean it up to see what we really had as far as us. And to get that new information back from, get it back to the association of counties. Now, if you look at it and we comparing it to our general fund, it has always been suggested that in Williamsburg County, most of our, again, our general fund money goes into staff. Well, if you look at the percentages and all of this information was pulled off for South Carolina Association of Counties, you look at the data, it's pretty much even with most counties that their percentage of their general fund takes up the majority of, is, takes up, is used mostly on personnel. So these are the different numbers that they're showing. And I believe these are the 2020 budgets when we ended up having to have the cut due to the COVID-related expenses or COVID-related not receiving enough revenue in. So if you look at us now, taking a look at us from our population as well as how many square miles we are responsible for in a county, you look at it, Williamsburg County, and our population group is the largest, just in our population group. The only one that comes closest to us is Jasper. Now, I found that it was necessary that we talk about square miles and population because that impacts services. So this is where we are up here. I'm not going to read all these numbers down. It's there for you to see. And it's, well, it's on a printout that I will be issuing out to you later on. One of the things that I saw that there were disparities in, and not to say that it's inclusive of everything that I saw disparities is in, but when I looked at all of the county, the county comparisons and numbers or profiles of county employees, there were areas that stuck out the most. Where was Williamsburg County at that differed from the other counties? So I took these categories of interest, which was the number of fire stations, recycling centers we have, parks, wrecks, buildings, grounds, law enforcement, and emergency medical areas. Now, my data that I have, that I received, it came from, I issued out a blast to the South Carolina Association Group of County Supervisors and Administrators. So their data that they sent me back on an email, and if you'd like to see the various counties that did respond, you will see exactly that the numbers, how the numbers look. But these were areas of particular concern because these were areas that we were very different from other counties in. So that was necessary to pull out these variables. Now, there's other non-public safety offices that could have gone up there, but the list would have been extremely long. So if you, but I did send you over, you have an Excel spreadsheet with the numbers comparing departments to departments. So if you look at Edgefield, Edgefield has zero fire stations. All of their fire stations that they have are all volunteer fire, are all volunteer fire stations. They have eight recycling centers. They have one recreation park that's county maintained. I didn't get any data on how many buildings and grounds that they're responsible for. But their law enforcement entities, they have 35 deputies that cover 502 miles of coverage. And they have an emergency medical department, emergency medical services with three EMS stations. And they only cover 26,000 residences. If you look at Marion County, another, another area that does not have any county maintained fire stations, but there are other cities, subsidies around them that do have their own fire stations. Their recycling centers, they have three that are staffed. They have between six to seven parks. Their buildings and grounds, there was no report on there, but they have 45 deputies that cover 489 square miles. And I didn't get a report on their emergency medical services. Then you compare our sister county right next door to us, Claritin County. They have 17 fire stations, 38 full-time firemen that actually work those areas, and five part-time firefighters. Recycling centers to include their landfill is 12. And they have four county maintained parks. Building grounds was not reported. And they have 62 deputies that cover 607 square miles. Then you look at Dillon County, which is not far away, is, these are their demographics in which, or how they break their things. They have seven stations and 18 full-time firemen and 12 recycling centers, 44 deputies that cover 405 square miles. And they have three stations, three EMS stations, 24 full-time and eight part-time. So as we began to look at those things, I wanted to ensure that we matched apples with apples. So if it said that we have this, then how do we compare with this county and how their breakdown is done? Marlborough County, great, great group over there. I had a good time talking to them about their numbers. So they have 10 fire, 10 fire stations with 15 full times. They have three shifts that they run constantly. Or, I'm sorry, on this one, they have three shifts, three people that work on a shift a given day. They got three recycling centers, but they do have curbside pickup in their county. So I was asking them about how that works out for them, but they have only three because they do have curbside pickup. They got seven parks and have 17 county maintained buildings, 30 deputies, 480 square miles. And they have an emergency medical service that has 47 people and it does include their part-time people. Then we take a look at Jasper. Jasper County's Fire Department have a $5.5 million budget just for their fire station. And they run three 24/7 operations there. So that's, I didn't get any other reports from them as far as those particular areas of interest that I was looking for. Then you have Williamsburg County. We got 23 fire stations, of which 12 time, full-time firefighters. And we do have a host of volunteers that work for us. We also have 20 recycling centers, one landfill. We have 18 parks right now, for which I'm happy to say that those numbers since the beginning of my administration has come down. And we are working on looking at trying to figure out how to lessen those numbers as well. As far as our building and grounds, we have 35 county maintained buildings. That does not include the fire stations. If you add on the 23 fire stations or EMS stations, you're looking at about 56 county maintained buildings. We have 44 deputies that cover 934 square miles. And we have three stations, 21 full-time and 10 part-time people. So to say all that is that it was important that you look at, yes, how many people you have working in county government, but you also look at the services. And clearly, our services extend past our, we're more asset-heavy than we are personnel-heavy. And that was determined as I spoke to different counties about how many things they have. I was like, you know, we got this. They seem to, more of their financial side goes into their employees versus a lot of assets. So the question is, how do we kind of bring some of these things in the line, in alignment in order to save money? So phase two comes in. Phase two will look at and I will evaluate. And because of the fact that it is discussing personnel matters, I will get into this more with you in detail during our executive session meeting about how are we going to reconstruct our operations so that we can become more efficient and how we can save more money to use for things that people want, our citizens want or our citizens need, and lessen some of the burden on some of the other areas. And one of those, one of those parts of this reconstruction plan is combining some departments. Also, cross-training current staff to do multiple jobs. I think that's necessary, that we try to maximize the use of our employees while understanding, with an understanding that, yes, if you're taking on somewhat of more responsibility, then you should be compensated for some of that extra responsibility. But it's a lot less than paying for another person to do the job. And also to repurpose some of our staff members. So before you consider phasing a group out, how do we use them for another purpose? Where can we put them somewhere else at? So phase three is looking at our assets, which is where all of us kind of need to look at from the perspective of how do we try to not only deal with our personnel issues, figure out how we can work more efficiently, and then on top of that, how do we look at our assets as it compares to what other counties are doing? Granted, the sizes are different, but what other services can be done or what can we do differently? So some of those things is we need to look at some of our county maintained parks. We've been having this discussion now for, since the beginning of my administration. The fact is that talking to some of these other counties, it sheds a good light on some ways to somewhat save money in the context of if you have less, then you would be able to dedicate more to a certain service. So I've been getting a lot of calls and emails and Facebook posts on people were asking about, how do we make better recycling centers? Most people are looking at Coward. Coward has that ramp that you drive up on and you drop your trash down versus, you know, grandma or grandpa trying to hoist a bag over the bulk trash into the back trash bins. Well, those things cost money. It would not be cost-effective for us to actually put those at 20 stations. So over the last few months, we have been doing calculations, been taking a tally as to what is the actual traffic at all of these facilities? How many people are actually visiting them on a given time? So that helps with some of the analysis that have been done. Also, you're looking at the fact that we have, we have a lot of places that we really need some cleaning up on. And with the savings that you use for some of these things, you can come out a little bit better and be able to get a little bit more. Also, our recycling centers, we have right now every single lease that's on these recycling centers, according to the records I have, are all expired. And they have been expired for many, 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 many years. So right now, we have equipment in places where we don't necessarily have authority to be in at this point. So those things have to be cleaned up to see what's going on. Not to mention, many of the people that have leases, that we're paying leases, are asking now for increases on these leases, which is another area I will be talking to you about as far as contractual matters in our meeting. So these are things that we're going to have to do to try to clean, clean up a little bit and to help on all sides. If we want savings, we're going to have to pull from everywhere. And it's going to take all of us working together. Tonight, we'll be talking about the energy-efficient lighting system that has been presented to council months before COVID. That's a good start in the right direction as to how we're saving money by cutting down on some of the electricity usage. And that will help out a lot. That will give us some savings. Also reducing the use of paper. As of now, we're beginning to put a lot of our forms online for our employees to use so that we're not spending money on these duplicate copies that we've been spending money on. It's now on the internet and they can go ahead and fill them out and only print one copy versus us having to spend money on multiple copies. Looking at renegotiating some of our contracts for better rates. That's something that our finance director, Ms. Nelson, she's constantly on that, in that area. And she's always looking for a way to figure out, how can we reduce, you know, y'all should go down or y'all charging us too much. And if, you know, she's really good at that negotiation side of that contract. Also, how do we train employees to become more efficient and become better at what they do so that we don't have so much waste in county government? And also with our IT team relying on technology to get us through. So the bottom line is reducing employment liability and reducing county assets will save the county money, for which you will see in executive session how much money the county can actually save by doing a few things different. So at this point, does anyone have any questions?
Not really a question, but you know, just a comment. And you know, like we said, these are some of the things that we knew coming in that, you know, we, we needed to be more efficient. And you know, it's just, it's just an opportunity for us to get to that point.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. The next order of business on here is, as I mentioned earlier, is the recycling center lease agreements, for which we will get into detail more, more detail in executive session. Because as I've stated, you have a few people who've asked for, they want to increase their lease agreements, the amount being paid to lease their property. So I have a few ideas as to, you know, how we need to look at that. I was speaking to our county attorney earlier today for him to look at starting to get these renewals in order so that we can protect the county. Because like I said, with no leases, we really are not supposed to be on the properties at all. But some of that stuff is just a minor oversight over the course of the years. It just wasn't hap, it didn't happen. So we move on from there. Our financial advisor will be on to discuss, at some point, to discuss some of the issues concerning finances and the water and sewer projects. As you all know, we have been running studies on that. He has been running studies on that to determine a way in which we can continue to do our water systems, to continue to do our water and projects and while not creating an issue for the general fund or any other fund. The green bulb lighting, energy-efficient LED proposal. There is no contract on that right now, but does anyone have any questions about that? You all had met with them, I want to say, definitely before COVID, to discuss how, what proposals that they can bring about because now they're coming around again. They're ready for us to get involved and I am too. Any questions about that? You need a refresher on that?
If you don't mind.
So basically, a company, this company came in and provided a solution for us to cut down on our, on our systems. Their proposal was to come in and change out the existing fixtures out of a few buildings that were running extremely high on the electricity, which were like our detention center, our recovery center, our PSA building, places like that that had a high amount of electricity being spent. So this company promises with changing out the lighting fixtures and it'll last longer. You won't have to replace these light bulbs as often as we do. So that is a cost savings for the county as well. And plus, they burn better. They're much easier on your eyes. And obviously, less energies having to be exerted for using them. So it was like three really good components that they talked about. So it was mostly something that the state would help us outfitting. However, there was going to be some cost to Williamsburg County, but we would also still see a cost savings because of the lessened amount of bills. They came in, they did a one-year audit on all of our electric bills and determined how they could actually save us money. So they will be officially, will come in and talk about that during the next council meeting. Like I said, if you have any questions or you don't remember, I can get that information over there to you so that you be ready to look at it for first reading next, next meeting. It did clear the finance committee. They did vote for it to go before full council. We just hadn't had the opportunity to do it with everything going on.
Donna Wright, did they give us any references?
The big proposal book, I don't know if we, I don't think you all got that, but there's a huge proposal book that we'll have the opportunity, if you'd like, for us to go through, that listed everything. Because I do know that was one of your questions. You said the counties there, they're working with some counties in South Carolina and more, should say, mostly like school district type contracts that they have.
Okay, but they will come back and present.
Yes. Any questions about the green bulb lighting, energy-efficient LED proposal? Alright, moving on to, I believe, the additional Christmas holidays for county employees. This was, just to kind of talk to y'all about that, I know that there was some questions regarding the holiday. I believe it was put into place by a, by council did allow that, but I just wanted, I'm here, I added it on here just in case anyone has any questions or concerns about the dates. And I believe it's the Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday of, because Christmas falls on weekend.
I think that is, that's what we agreed to do, right?
Mm-hmm, right. Okay, just making sure. At this time, if no one has any questions about any of the information, y'all need any clarity on there? Because some of this stuff will go, you will see this again during the next council meeting, especially with the lease agreements. We really need to try to get those back into compliance. Any questions? Today? I don't know. Because we don't have a lease on it, but our equipment is on there. I would believe that it would probably default to the owners because now the owners are basically in control of their own property and we're the ones who have equipment on there. According to the huge book that I got, none of that was in there. I didn't see any of it. It's been that I hadn't seen that in this, this book that she go, I mean, if you're, if you're saying that that's true, then I believe that that's true, but. If you can find, if you can locate a copy, that would be great. But they have a book. Okay, they have a very large book that they go by. And when I, they handed me that book and I'm like, look through it. I'm like, the stuff's all old. Get Tammy to check that, but I didn't see it. But if it is there, I believe you will go ahead and try to research it and see where it's at. If you got a copy of it, be great. If you can get it to me or email it or something to me. At least we got one that's good, that's valid. Any other questions?
And this doesn't pertain to this per se, but if you could just mention to us again how citizens are able to pay their taxes, or if they have any questions that they need to ask any of the departments, can you run back through that very quickly for us?
Sure.
For citizens to know again, how they're supposed to conduct business?
While the doors are locked, just as a reminder, the county government is not closed, just to the citizens, they're not closed. They have a list of telephone numbers. If someone does come to the building and need to have some service done, however, we do have a phone number, phone numbers for everyone and information can be received via telephone. They're also taking limited appointments if there is something that cannot be handled over the phone. At this point, they do have a phone service that you can call in and pay your taxes over the phone, and also there's the internet in which you can go pay them online. We also have drop boxes that are out in front of the facilities, for which, if you'd like, you can drop it in the drop box as long as you don't have cash. They check these items at least four to five times a day, and they've been mailing like crazy people's stuff off to them and so that it gets to them within two to three days at most. And if it's an issue dealing with DMV, they are faxing the information over to DMV immediately so that citizens can get, you know, get their business taken care of. We were looking at, and in the future, looking at, for now, it's tentative, looking at some other alternatives that getting services back up and running. I just hadn't confirmed it. Again, these areas are handled by not only myself, but other elected officials, but we are in conversations to see where we can kind of make some things a little bit easier for our citizens. I was hoping for a limited reopening by January, but we will still have to see how we're dealing with COVID-19 and how that's impacting us. A mental note, just as a note, we got word, November 15, 2020 is the last day, the last day as of now, that we will be able to claim any of our COVID-related expenses. So, that too is going to cause a problem, because FEMA will not be paying for any reopening issues. Anything dealing with reopening, they will not pay for it. So, if we had to go and purchase foggers for the building, it's not going to be covered. If you have to do anything related to bringing on staff to help sheriff's office going out there and monitoring what's going on at all these clubs and keeping the numbers down, that will not be covered. It is considered a reopening expense. So, we are working right now to submit all of our, because CARES Act is a little bit more broader, gives us a little bit more opportunity to submit reimbursements back for certain things that were, are not now being covered by FEMA. So, CARES Act expires, the last day you can put in any CARES Act reimbursements is November 15, 2020. So, that's going to have some impact on opening as well. We're trying to stockpile some of our things now to get those in so that if something does happen and this does get, get, increase our number of infected people or our rates begin to go up, at least we'll have things that are on hand right now that will be able to at least keep our employees safe and any of the supporting agencies that we've been keeping safe since this happened.
Dr. Wright, I know, nationally, the COVID cases in the United States, they're escalating. Is ours, in our county, escalating, or is this kind of stabilizing itself, or is it decreasing? Or what's exactly the status of that? Because I'm saying that because I know your plans were to open back up in January, but I think it would be kind of prudent, you know, to think about it, and if it's, if our cases are escalating, it just wouldn't make sense. And I think the opening need to be contingent upon how, how are we doing with this COVID?
Yes, this, this is, that's exactly what I stated. I had hopes of opening in January, but unfortunately, with all of the, now not being able to possibly pay for keeping my employees safe because of, I mean, we just don't have that extra in there to be purchasing all this stuff. We're trying to do what we can now to prepare for it. If we begin to see the numbers as we are now, and they're sporadic right now, they're kind of up and down, you know, you just, you just don't know. But we don't want it to get worse. Even the hospital, I believe, has began to see an influx in those who are coming to get tested for COVID. A lot of our testing here, we used to do testing more often, we're not doing it as often now, and hopefully, we can start those things back up. So, those things are going to tell a different story for us. So, it's going to depend on, yes, largely as to how, what's happening in the climate and what do we need to be preparing ourselves for during the next wave.
So, I know like this, this summer, you know, every week, you could find a testing site close by.
Right.
And I know DHEC has had a couple of tests in various areas, but it's still not as often. And so, that might give us the thought that, you know, oh, the numbers are going down, when actually, when in actuality, we're just not testing as much.
That's right, you're right, you're absolutely right. And I think too, people are really, have let their guard down. We call it COVID sick. You know, we're just tired. We, we're not doing the things that we were doing in the beginning to keep ourselves safe, we're just pretty much tired. But when you're at, when you have a population, where 3% of your population that catch COVID dies, that's pretty big. 3% of our population that actually was diagnosed with COVID-19 died. Right. They did phase one of CARES Act, and then, you know, it included a barrage of different things that they covered. Phase two, they were able to get additional funding for local government in our response as well. They're in phase two and they're, they're doing right by the, by the people. It's just that it's not, with this increasing, we're hoping, the threat increasing, we're hoping that they get more money to help local government. We never received any money to, to deal with, you know, operational costs or loss of revenue. We didn't get a bailout. No county, no county agency got a bailout like some of our small businesses did. So, we had to kind of just hold our own. And right now, with us even cutting it by the 15%, and now trying to do some other things, we're still going to, at some point, have the potential to, to get ourselves in trouble. But we are going to save ourselves, and I think that looking at some of these plans will help us do that, will keep us above water until something else comes up. Right. So, we have to hold our own for a while, which, which we're preparing to do that now. Yeah, we're preparing to do that now. Any other questions, comments? Or, one of the things I do want to let the citizens know, that there is still a mask ordinance in place. Where the, the confusion came from was 60 days. It says 60 days, or there is no longer an emergency. We are still in an emergency. There is still a state of emergency for, for United States, and we must continue to adhere to the mask ordinance. I've walked in grocery stores and seen people with no masks on here in Williamsburg County, where you go other places, people are taking it serious. And if we don't continue to take it, if we don't step our game up, then we're going to end up in a, in a worse situation than what we were in when we started this out. So, it's important that we talk to our constituents, churches, friends, and tell them, put your mask on. Even now, with holiday season coming up, we're going, we're going to see a influx of increases to this, because people are going, are letting their guard down.
But Doc, you know, the people are getting mixed messages, even from the national level on down, to state level. And me, just like you, I have seen gatherings with people not wearing any kind of protection, and they're not practicing distancing or anything of that nature. And I guess my question is, what's, what's the consequences? And if there are no consequences, why not, why can't they just do what they want to do? Now, if there's a stop, a traffic light, you don't stop, and the police catch you, there's a consequence. So, we have an ordinance in place, but what are the consequences or penalty for violating that ordinance? Do we have, do we have any?
Yes, you do have it written in your ordinance that there is a fee, a fine, that you will pay. And, and, and just, you know, I apologize for not looking into it to see how many of these have been written yet. But there is something in there with a little bit of teeth to suggest that you need to make sure you do what you do. But Mr. Woods, our, our law enforcement entities, and you all know this, they are just stressed to the max. And for them to be really to try to, they can barely do traffic. So, for them to really have to look at doing enforcement of something like this, it's going to be something, it's going to be a little rough on them.
But Doc, what, what would be the protocol i, if I were to go to Hemingway, and there's a gathering of 200 people I see in a yard having a party, even though the law enforcement people, they are stressed out and they're stretched out, how can I, as a citizen, do something to try and deter that? And I can talk to them, then you probably may get shot, so that may not be a good idea. So, what can I, as a citizen, do when I know how important it is that they practice distancing and wearing protective equipment and they're not doing it? The policemen, they are tied up perhaps, but me, as a citizen, I want to do something because I want to live. What could I do?
Call 911.
Okay.
And report it. That's, that's one of the things that they do out there with their, that's one of the real big things that they're really focusing on, you know, really on weekends and things like that, is getting out to these places and making sure that people are adhering to the governor's mandate, in which, you know, effective 11/15/2020 will no longer be funded. So, I really don't know what we're going to do after that, we're just going to have to eat that cost, because they're not going to start doing their job or, or holding the mandates that have been set for them.
Well, that's good. I just want the citizens to know that they do have an obligation as well. When you see these things, report them.
And you see something, say something.
Yeah, you see something, say something.
Yes.
I know there's nothing we can really, really do about anything like that, but is there something that we can do about the establishment that don't have the sign, that don't have the sign that said, you must have a mask in this, in this building or something like that? Because I've seen the lot, that don't have that sign up, but there's, you know, that, even that itself is an indicator that you should be have a mask on. But I, I wouldn't expect no law enforcement have to go into one of the grocery stores and start walking around and arresting people. But if that sign was up there, that would be some encouragement that you, a mask must be worn in this establishment.
So, our fire departments, very early on, our fire marshals, very early on, went out to the businesses and gave occupancy levels, much like you see back there in our facility now have one. And it's up to the owners to actually, at, you know, the owners of the businesses to stick by that and only let certain amount of people in and, you know, with the face mask. So, like I said, people done got real lax with it. So, this is where we're finding ourselves.
And I, and I think, you know, we have to just use some common sense and, you know, we're in survival mode, even though everyone is tired, we miss hugging people, you know, we still have to just be cognizant that, you know, there is something out here that can take you out. And so, we just have to continue to stay in survival mode and, you know, just use common sense that, hey, you know, I can't participate in everything.
That's right, I agree. Any other questions? Because we need to go into executive session. Can we get a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter concerning budgetary effects of a personnel matter?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers, the same. You guys have it, you're now going to executive session. Thank you. Yep, let me make sure they, they got everything off.
No good in no gatherings.
No good in no gatherings.
Goodbye, we're ready. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed is the same. Guys have it. We are out of executive session. Report from executive sessions, no action taken. Do we have any additional question for the good of the order before we adjourn?
Seconding, any discussion?
I don't think so. I hear not, hearing none. All those in favor for adjournment, please signify by saying aye.